We get started today, we just wanted to publicly express on behalf of the board our deepest condolences to the superintendent on the passing of her mother. Our prayers are with you and again, we stand with you, just wanted to just acknowledge that. At this time, today's agenda, we're going to start to take a look at the recovery plan update. You see a lot of hard work has gone into this. But with anything of this level of complexity, there'll be bumps along the way. So I think what we, as we look at the plan and we begin to look, that this is not the last time that we'll look. But from this, we'll probably find some areas where we would want to do some additional deep dives. From the board's perspective, we are very much interested in making sure that we are creating an environment in the state where the children can learn. We're creating the right kind of environment. So we will ask questions and we'll look for opportunities where we can help. So without any further ado, I'd like to turn this portion of the agenda over to Dr. Salmon.
Thank you very much, President Crawford. If I may take a personal point. I do appreciate the condolences. My mother, Dr. Ruth Birkins, was a longtime educator in Maryland. Thirty-two years in Hartford County Public Schools as a teacher, a supervisor, and also a director of special education. And children were close to her heart, obviously, and a passion that she gave to me. And so I am very lucky to have had a presence like that in my life. And so thank you for your expression of sympathy. We have put a lot of work today in this preparation for this meeting because we wanted to make sure that we were giving the board as much information as possible in order for you to be able to determine where we're moving and where the systems are moving for the fall for education for our Maryland students, almost little over nine hundred thousand of them. So you will see a lot of attachments and a lot of additional information that you have for your review. And I'm going to start first with asking our team. And I have to just say that Dr. Carol Williamson and Dr. Sylvia Lawson and Mary Gable and many others have put hours and hours and hours into this presentation for today. And I'd like to thank them for their twenty-four hour work over the last seven days to get this together for everyone. So I want to thank them publicly. They are going to share the presentation with me today. Dr. Williamson will begin. Mary will also do some of the presentation. And then I will do some. And so we'll have a little bit of relief from one speaker today. So Carol, would you begin the presentation, please?
Thank you, Dr. Salmon. Good morning, Mr. Crawford, Ms. Hallie, Dr. Salmon, and board members. This morning, we are going to share information with you regarding our local school system recovery plans. As I know you're aware, local school systems were required to have posted on their websites by April fourteenth their school system recovery plans. And I also know that you recognize that as just a little more than a week ago, that happened. There hasn't been a lot of time between the time we began to see them and the time that they have been reviewed. But we have lots of information to share. Dr. Lawson, Mrs. Gable, and I have worked diligently over the last several weeks to collect information from those systems that had draft plans posted. And then to the best of our abilities, we've updated our notes with plans, school systems posted last week. We want to provide you with as much up-to-date information as possible regarding the questions that you originally posed. We've organized the PowerPoint in the order of what you indicated you wanted to know initially. Such as, what will be the first day of school for each system? What plan or model will each school system be implementing? How will school systems engage students in the learning process? Will school systems be addressing social, emotional learning? How will school systems be grading students? How will they address student attendance? What's the level of connectivity for our school systems? You also indicated you wanted to know how we were going to review and monitor the plans and how school systems would be held accountable for what was in their plans. First, I want to let you know that all school systems had their plans posted by the fourteenth and had submitted them along with their requirements checklist that identified where to locate the information about the thirteen requirements within their plan. And second, I want to make you aware that plans vary in length and complexity from approximately twenty-five pages to two-hundred-and-ten pages. Those that are shorter have many, many links that transport the reader to much more detailed information. Our review team was trained early last week and is in the process of closely reviewing each of the plans. And we will provide you with information on that process this morning. In your board materials, you were sent two PowerPoints and a longer document on implementation and evaluation. The first PowerPoint, Maryland Recovery Plan Update, is intended to provide board members with information regarding those items that you requested. Although we summarize various data in the presentation, we sent you more detailed information in your board packets. We believe the second PowerPoint is the more significant one. Through it, we're going to show you how we're reviewing the local recovery plans, how we propose we will monitor their implementation and evaluate their outcomes. That PowerPoint summarizes the information in the larger document, which is our draft plan for implementation and evaluation. Mrs. Gable is going to lead us through the first PowerPoint and share the information we're able to glean from the systems recovery plans regarding your questions. This is not a summary or a report on what our team of reviewers has found from their close examination of the plans. They are only in the process of getting that information now. And we'll share that with you at a later date. So let's get started on what Dr. Lawson, Mrs. Gable, and I were able to pull together regarding your questions. Mary? Nobody's answering you. Want to use my computer? Mary's working to get the first slide up in case you can't hear her and in order to get my microphone, I have to had to stop sharing. And so we're going to start sharing. Okay, good morning, everyone. And thank you, Dr. Williamson, for introducing this. The first thing we wanted to share with you was the first day of school. And so we have summarized that. There are three dates of which our school systems are beginning school. August thirty-first, and you see before you the eight school systems. Two school systems are starting on September first. And the remaining fourteen school systems are starting on September eighth. Of those school systems, ten school systems announced at various times in the past, perhaps two months, that they were beginning schools virtually and would be virtual through the end of the semester. Those school systems are before you in the slide. However, some of those school systems have sensed that and they will be considering, depending on the circumstance, bringing back small groups of students. And we will share that information with you in some upcoming slides. The remaining fourteen school systems have announced also that they are opening virtually, but they will be transitioning at a variety of times to bring students back in small groups. We realize that the slide before you has a lot of information. Certainly, I'm not going to cover every school system. Abolded, and in addition, you have some additional information, which I'll talk about in a minute. I want to highlight some of the school systems that have indicated particular dates. So you can see that Baltimore City has indicated that their decision will be made by October sixteenth at the latest. And at the end of September, they hope to be bringing in small groups of students. Calvert County has also indicated starting in person as early as September twenty-first. Caroline County, small groups starting September eighth. Carroll County, a decision will be made by October fourteenth. Cecil, slightly earlier, provide face-to-face instruction with small groups of students. And then Frederick, small groups of students, September fourteenth. Garrett County has said that they will be fully virtual for the first nine weeks of the semester. Selected students as early as September fourteenth. Hartford, opening with a limited number. Howard County, a phase-in to group, face-to-face instruction. Kent will move to a hybrid, they give you November eleventh. Montgomery County and Prince George's County both have said that they are virtual for the first semester. And they have indicated the months in which that they will be bringing in person or making decisions regarding that. Minans County has a number of phases, and they're starting the school year starting September fourteenth. Somerset, as early as four weeks after the start of school. St. Mary's, beginning second quarter of the fall semester. Talbot, starting as bringing small groups of students as early as September fifteenth. Wacomico, beginning on or before October one. And Worcester, students starting tier two and tier three, and all of this is defined in their plans. I want to call your attention to information that we did provide to the board members as paper copy, and the information will be posted on the website. And these two documents, the first or one of which is a summary, which is basically what is on the slide. And then the second attachment is a pretty lengthy attachment where we have had individuals on actually my team and other teams. But this one went through every plan. And I want you to know that we were reviewing the plans, starting with their drafts. As you know, school systems were posting plans over the past month to month and a half. But on August fourteenth, the plans had to be posted. So since August fourteenth, we went back through all of the plans. So you're going to see some iterative information that's included in that document. Models, some summary is there are numbers of school systems that are working together. Nine County Eastern Shore Consortium, a blended learning, those school systems are listed on your slide. They're in various stages, some a little ahead of the other. But most of them, if parents can opt for the program to bring to have a virtual platform taught by teachers within the system as a start. There's a second model, this is a three county in Southern Maryland, where three school systems that are listed before you are considering blended virtual program for second semester. For semester, the school systems will be using their own models. Multiple school systems, many of them in their plans have announced that parents can opt out of a particular hybrid model that they may be moving to and remain virtual for the remainder of the year. Student engagement, and I think, Dr. Salmon, if you wanted to speak to student engagements.
Thank you. So synchronous learning, these are terms that have cropped up during the
Dr. Salmon, we need your mic.
I thought it was, hang on.
Does someone
Can I, can you hear me now?
Hear you now.
All right, great. Sorry about that. I thought it was on. During the pandemic, we were getting new terms for things. We now have synchronous and asynchronous learning. You know, education always likes its terms. So here are two more. Synchronous learning represents learning in which the teacher is working directly with students. And asynchronous learning is non-teacher-directed, where the students are working totally independently. So the organization for each local school system's instructional model has been provided. And you can see the times that have been allotted in each system for each grade level band for synchronous and asynchronous instruction. If you refer to attachment C, you will see the different time factors for both synchronous and asynchronous teaching for each of the local school systems. As we reviewed these data, it became apparent that there was a lot of variability in this information for students across the state. And so my recommendation to the board today is that the board agree that we really need systems to be providing at least an average of three-point-five hours of synchronous learning per day. Just to note, the annotated code said that a school day is really at least three hours. So that's going to be my recommendation for your vote today. We don't have to do it right now, but I just wanted to alert you that that is the recommendation that I'm making, given my review of the number of hours across the state. One of our huge initiatives throughout the last four years has been equity. And I want to make sure that all students have the same opportunities across the state for learning. And I think this is very, very crucial. Additionally, I will be bringing to the board an update after the first quarter of all the school systems that have been open, their achievements, the systems that haven't been open. We're going to take a look at their metrics. And so the first quarter is going to be a time where we can analyze the progress we've made for getting public school back going again across the state. So that will be a key point for future discussions. And I'm going to then turn it back now to Mary. Thank you.
So one of the very important points is social, emotional learning. And as we approach the beginning of the school year, the twenty-twenty-one school year, we know that the health and physical safety of each of our students is paramount and important. But there's another very primary consideration, and that's the social and emotional well-being of each of our students and how they are going to reconnect and how their families are going to reconnect with educators. And to determine how best to offer more targeted or individualized supports for students who have increased social and emotional needs that have been extended and exacerbated by the pandemic. As we look at the services that are provided by the state and by each of our local school systems and schools, we offer a multi-tiered lens of support, social, emotional supports. And in the green area, these are the areas that are offered to all students. What can we do to ensure the safety of all of our students? As we move further, we have further check-ins or small group topic circles, perhaps conflict resolution to work with our students. And then there's a smaller group of students, as we all know, that need individualized supports and wraparound services. How are school systems addressing social, emotional needs? We're, as we reviewed the plans, all of the local school systems, and I think it was twenty-two out of twenty-four, indicated directly in their plans. But we also know that in their websites and across the programs that they have offered, all twenty-four of our local school systems are offering social, emotional needs. Some of them are adjusting schedules to provide time, morning meetings. You'll see some of that information in as you look at attachment, the second attachment with the in-depth look at our school systems. A number are offering different programs, Second Step programs, which is a program on social, emotional learning, building on topics based on brain development, practice skills, and lessons. They're using adverse childhood experiences program, and we know that trauma can have long-term effects on students. Youth Mental Health First Aid has been a program that many of our school systems are using. Many of them, we have actually trained hundreds of educators and our staff in our local school systems and what can happen to, or what they can do to identify indications, but also what they can do if they see it and who they should be in contact with. A number of other programs that you see before you, restorative practices, trauma-informed, and so on. They're providing professional learning for educators, reaching out to parents, targeted instruction, and our school counselors are doing interventions and check-ins. In summary, so just an overlapping, many of our school systems are doing PBIS. We have over eight hundred schools doing PBIS, a program of positive interventions where the focus is on positive behavior and prevention on punishment. Four of our school systems, as I've mentioned, are doing Second Step well-being and looking at social, emotional learning through grade eight. Many of our school systems are doing Handle With Care, which is also trauma-informed, raising awareness of students. And a number of our students are doing SEFO, Social Emotional Foundations for Early Learning. How are they delivering these? You'll see through some of your plans that the, as you review them, you'll see some of them are delivering and have built that into their day. Actual lessons, either developed and delivered by classroom teachers or school counselors or student support staff that they have available. They're providing that in different levels of time. Resources are being provided. We at MSD have teams working with local school systems to provide level, excuse me, lessons, having virtual check-ins with students and families. And just overall, working together because we know that students, having been away from their peers out of school since March, there are many needs as we bring these students back. One of the other items that State Board that you asked about is what's the grading system? What is the grading system that our school systems are using? As you know, when schools closed and the first day they were out was on March sixteen, lots of decisions had to be made. You had first and second marking period grades, third marking period grades in the process of being completed. And then how were they going to collect grades for the fourth marking period and final grades for the semester and for the year? School systems were grappling with that, made a variety of decisions. Across the plans, we've looked at the twenty-four school system plans, and they are going back to their normal, traditional grading policies that they have published. They also must take attendance for every day for students, whether it's a virtual environment, hybrid environment, and just like we do in a face-to-face school system, attendance must be taken by each, in each class, in each school for each day. School systems are using a variety of platforms. They have a number of platforms that they use. In some cases, when a student check-in, that will give them some information. Others, where our school systems are entering attendance into a platform that that school system is using. One thing that is across the board in the school systems' plans that they were very, very clear about is that every effort would be made to find support and reengage students. As you know, in the spring, many, many folks, administrators and student services staff were using all of their energies to reach out to students who may not have connected this, and they've been working on this over the summer, and they will continue to work in their plans for 2021. They are acknowledging that they, that within a family, there may be multiple children. How are they going to do timing? And we certainly know about working parents and how they're going to manage children who need to be working virtually, other end parents likewise. And now I'm turning back to Dr. Williamson for to speak on connectivity.
Thank you, Mary. I'm making sure that we're connected. Am I good? Yes, okay. That had posed to us was the concern about connectivity for students. And we, this is one of the harder areas to get a handle on of this moment. But what I would say is, this has been an area of interest since the time that we knew the schools were going to be closed. Dr. Salmon had brought this up with our superintendents and asked how many of our students would be able to have access to a digital device, which we're also going to mention here, and also about connectivity. And at that point, which was back in March and April, we did a survey with our school systems and we got some initial data. And the data you see in front of you is what we could confirm from that April-May assessment that we did with them, the survey we did with them. So it shows that we have a number of school systems that have fairly good connectivity. But I have to say, even when you're missing twenty percent of your students, if twenty percent of your students are not getting any more education than everyone else, it's how we're going to ensure that we try to accommodate that. So you'll see some just general information here. It just talks about the number of systems that have poor connectivity. And if you get a chance to look at some of their recovery plans, which I've been spending some time over the weekend reading through, you'll see that a number of systems are very concerned about connectivity. They're doing everything they can with some very special initiatives to make sure that they are able to get resources to students, being very creative. However, the governor is also very concerned about it. He's heard Dr. Salmon's message that we've got to do something about creating a more equitable system for all of our children. We're very aware of where the issues are. And so there now is a real broadband initiative where we are looking at a number of ways of getting connectivity to students. And so I believe that you see at the very bottom of this page, a mention of twenty-five million dollars that is currently being distributed. I sent you a page, your attachments, that showed the individual number of dollars that the school systems getting. And so this committee continues to meet, and I'm sort of on the periphery of that committee I was on at the beginning, just to hear how we were going to try to accommodate this. Dollars have to be spent by the end of December, so there is a push to get this done. And they're looking at towers and a table, but they're also saying that they're giving these grants to the school systems so they can get some hotspots or produce whatever forms that. Some way of getting the wifi to students. And that is a piece that our school systems are addressing now, they're writing the little dollars. So I wanted you to know that connectivity is not something that's not being thought about. Now, you would think, because that was your last question you had for us, except for the one on accountability, that would be all that would be in this PowerPoint. But no, we found something else to put in there for you that we thought would be helpful. And that's because we have a committee, and you heard Sally talk about this very much, about what we might be doing in terms of our digital advisory committee. We'll hear more about that tomorrow. But because of that committee, we did have an opportunity to look at some of this data. And so it's still in the data, and I apologize for that. We've surveyed the systems twice about it. Probably going to do another survey in the near future. But it takes a lot of time. Get your initial information, and when you look at it, as you look at all the counties, you realize that someone may not have interpreted it the same way. And so it involves a lot of phone calls back and forth and getting something. It feels really consistent. So we'll be doing that. But I feel fairly comfortable showing you that most school systems do have a, I'm hearing myself on triple now, so. Okay, that most school systems do have the devices they need for all of their students. And I think that's going to be a real boon for us, except for one problem. This is a national issue. This is not something that's just happening in Maryland. And so now that we have the dollars and now that we've ordered our digital devices, the issue is we can't get them because they're not being produced fast enough. So we have a number of systems that ordered as soon as they could. However, they have indicated it's going to be October, November before they get their devices in. devices in. So I thought you should be aware of that. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this because we can certainly talk about it another time when we get another survey, but I thought it would be helpful for you to see that other chart and to see which systems feel that they're comfortable. You saw some zeros on the chart with the technology and that was because those systems felt they wouldn't need any additional computers if they got enough CARES funding. And so that was just noted on there. And I really believe we could come back and give you a much more detailed report on this. I just wanted you to be aware and the public to be aware that the devices have been primary importance to us, along with the connectivity, that the state superintendent and governor and federally, we've gotten a number of dollars to help us eliminate that as a problem. We still will have the issue of having, think about how we're going to be updating them periodically and how the connectivity, the biggest issue, and I know I'm stepping back a minute, but I didn't want to forget to say this, isn't that they have connectivity? It's how much connectivity do they have? Because if you have two or three people in your home using a computer at the same time, you have several children and your parents are working from home, because they're teleworking, you have a huge demand in that particular home and maybe in that area, if you're in an area where there are a lot of parents that are having that same way of delivery. So we have to just be aware that there are a lot of things that we're going to have to contend with to make sure we eliminate this problem, but we are on it. So go to the next slide. And every time we go to the next slide, I get to be in triple. Okay. You can see from your, I really can't, help me, Mary, knowledge of it, and then I'm going to stop talking so you all can talk. But I wanted to mention that we'd had a problem during the spring because we had eleven school systems at that time that did not have a learning management system. That's a system that they can maybe load their lessons on to, they can push out information to students, they can do their in-time learning, their synchronous learning with their classroom or with groups of students. They didn't have that available. Now, all of our school systems have an LMS and they have done that through some of those dollars you saw with technology. So that, I think that's been hugely helpful. The bad news is they all have their own systems, so we were hoping at one point when we thought they weren't going to have a system that we can get something central, but we are going to have something central for systems that want to switch over and that'll, that'll be helpful too. But right now, everyone has a learning management system. Some systems, some school systems are also looking at vendor programs as a way of providing instruction to some of their students and we just listed the ones that are currently being used. We have AICs at many, um, Florida Virtual. Many of these were already being used in some form, they're being used in a little larger form. And this was because we had, at one point, hopefully, thought we were coming back to school the first day of school or maybe even in the summer and that there would be some parents that may not feel comfortable sending their children back and school systems were really thinking about having a model available, a virtual model or a virtual program that they could offer those parents. And so now, because we're doing everything virtual at the beginning, some of the school systems have delayed getting a more virtual program for their state, for their system, but they are going to be considering that. And so you heard that the Eastern Shore has something will be in place sometime this first semester and Southern Maryland is still talking about the one that they think they might put in place second semester when they have students back in school. And the only other thing I mentioned in this, that third block over there was just, we've been sharing innovative strategies and I'll just, I'm only going to mention the first one, certainly sent some things out and writing to you, but that backpack, K to five, there are a number of school systems that for young children are putting their digital device into the backpack along with learning materials and resources they can use at home and that every student will get that backpack. Like we used to do the backpacks before school started when they came in and we're providing the backpacks that they have at home. So I think that's our last slide, not. The most important thing I should have mentioned, and this is the most important thing to mention, is professional learning. So there have been, I drive to work a number of days a week. Every time I drive to work, Baltimore, and I live on the Eastern Shore, I get to listen to the radio and the radio often is talking about the remote program we had in the spring compared to what they say we say we're going to have in the fall. And I really have, am very encouraged about what's going to happen. We've known that our teachers had to jump right into remote learning at the March, in the March prime period, and they had had very little training on that. And as a matter of fact, that's what our digital learning committee was working on, how to get more opportunities for more students. We didn't expect to do it all at once. And now the issue is how do we get teachers enough training? And so in the spring and then also in the summer, our local school systems have done a tremendous amount of training and we at MSD have also been doing that training. So I just noted how many people had been trained, give you an opportunity to see that some have gotten it on online teaching, they want to teach online programs, and others have gotten it in how to teach remotely. And I think that's really going to be a benefit to us. You'll see that there's a Friday Institute at the bottom of this sheet that shows six hundred and thirty-eight educators had an opportunity to get training and they had to turn in a plan for how they're going to be using that. And we're now reviewing all of their plans to see how they're going to implement their strategies in terms of how they're going to provide instruction synchronously to their students. So I think there's been a lot of initiative out in the local school systems and the state level and we are continuing those into the fall so that even more people will have that opportunity and doing a lot of an online modules so that people can look at those and practice them without having to attend a workshop. So with that, I'm going to turn it back. There's one more? I'm going to turn it back to Dr. Salmon to ask if she wants to have any conversation here. I want to make only one final comment I just said a minute ago. And that is, we provided this information because this is the information you indicated you wanted to have hurry up after the plans come in. And we were able to try and pull this together, but the real meat of everything is really going to be in what we do in terms of what our implementation and our accountability, which is in our second presentation. We didn't know if you had questions or comments about this particular PowerPoint and what we provided you.
So thank you, Carol and Mary, very much. Let's pause for any burning questions that the board may have and then we'll get into the second presentation, which we believe is very, very important information. So I'll stop here and are there other questions before we move on?
Dr. Salmon, I had a question.
Yes, you can agree.
You had said that you were proposing to us that each elementary, or I'm sorry, that each district has at least three and a half hours of synchronous learning a day. As I went through the plans, I saw several counties that did not. How would that be addressed? Even, and I do agree with you that at least three and a half hours of synchronous learning, you know, must, must be offered to our students.
If that is the state standard, then we would ask those local school systems to go back and reevaluate their plans. And to be able to provide that. I think it's just really crucial that that would be the baseline.
Dr. Salmon, me and Hallie, I have a question. How did you arrive at the three and a half hour guideline?
Because that's basically an average and the COMAR, I'm sorry, the annotated code stipulates that a school day is at least three hours. So we decided that that made more sense. I don't, there are some school systems, as you see on the chart, that are providing up more than six hours of synchronous teaching a day and many are at the rate of four or above. We were concerned about the systems that were at one and one and a half or two, so we kind of took an average and we felt that would be a baseline. We would hope they would do more, but that is the average that I'm suggesting.
I'm very well agreeing again, Dr. Salmon. So when you go back to these districts and tell them that they need to raise those hours, how, in what time span are they going to be getting, what timeline will they be working in then?
I hope they would do it as soon as possible because school is starting and the kids need the instruction. So we're going to be working with them after today's meeting on this issue.
Dr. Salmon.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Sally. I have a question about how, how will small group instruction and those types of smaller synchronous learning opportunities fit into the three and a half as opposed to whole group instruction, synchronous whole group instruction?
I think it's a combination of how they count those and we're not going to get down into the, you know, the weeds on that, so to speak. I do know that some, in some cases, teachers will be providing synchronous teaching along with the asynchronous virtual teaching at the same time in the, from their classrooms. So there'll be different ways to, to, to check on that and to account for that, but we're just saying that we'd like to see an average of three and a half hours a day across the board. So it's, it's accounting for everything.
Okay, so small group and whole group is accounted in that number. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
So Dr. Salmon, first I do want to compliment your team because this was extensive and detailed information and I can only imagine, you know, the perseverance that it took to do this and I appreciate it. So you know, I'm in the thick of this as I run a school and I have the benefit of running a small school, so I can do things differently, but I've learned a few things. So, and I have colleagues. So I'm very concerned about special education students. I'm concerned that my speech language colleagues might have caseloads of fifty to eighty students and they can't possibly see all those students individually and, and their IEPs are not calling for individual, they're calling for small group. And I have heard that because of verbal constraints, they can't hold their small group, their small group therapy sessions virtually synchronously, just in one of the platforms which I find problematic. Not all of the school districts indicate small group. I'm, I'm thinking that small groups means children with IEPs and then there are children that are so significantly affected that a computer-based live instruction has no meaning. So how, how will we help districts to provide the services to students and, and those students are, those services are mandated by their IEPs legally. So, so how do we work with that?
So all good questions. I don't know if I can answer all of them today, but I will certainly, you know, get back to the board on the ones that I can. I do know that many of the districts will be bringing their students that have significant disabilities back into in-person instruction as early as September the eighth. In terms of the virtual nature of conducting a group for speech therapy, I can't imagine why that would be a problem, but I will check into that for you because it doesn't seem like that should be any different than getting a classroom of students together.
I agree, yeah, I agree, but that's what I heard from some colleagues, not necessarily in this state, but I find that an excuse rather than a, a, a way to walk around.
I'm pretty sure that that's not an impediment, but I'll get back to you on that. But I do know that there's been, we've been pushing special education to, to be absolutely crucial for these students because you can't do a computer virtual program with many of them. And I do have to congratulate some of our non-public schools because they, early on, went back and opened up their classrooms for in-person instruction and were a great model for the rest of us. So I think it's definitely doable. Now, there will be some students that are immunocompromised that are in that group that we will have to maintain the virtual program for, but we are constantly looking at materials and resources that make it easier for them to, to, to be able to benefit from it. But I think, I think our emphasis will be on those students and also our youngest students who do have difficulty learning for any sustained period of time from a computer. So if you look at some of the recommendations from the Harvard Institute, you'll see that they do recommend, again, special education students, younger students to be the ones that come back first. So you make very good points.
Karen, thank you. I'm sorry, just to follow up, thank you, I appreciate it. And, and of course, you know that I'm also concerned with all the lowest performing groups. I'm looking at, you know, our English learners as well as children from very low socio, socioeconomic background and, you know, we're, we're working hard, but I do have concerns and, and I hope that we as a board can look at these, these real true issues with connectivity and hardware and, and instead of just acknowledging them, put on our brains together and our heads together to see concretely can we do to change that trajectory? So I appreciate all of the efforts on the part of the department, but I do want you to know that, that I personally, and I think the board is in support of doing, not just now, so.
Dr. Millen McCaffrey, I also want to recognize the fact that, you know, the governor has been very concerned about this and having him put so many funds towards broadband and connectivity has just been absolutely so welcomed. And we are working with the Rural Broadband Committee right now and they are, they are putting together some very quick, not the towers because that may take more time, but they're putting together some short-term fixes that'll hopefully be ready, you know, hopefully this month or in September. So we are really concerned about it, but we are very thankful to have the funds to be able to do something about it, as you suggested.
Karen, this, this, this is Gail. Could I ask a question please?
Sure.
I, I was at, obviously at my church yesterday and I was thinking about some of the church buildings that sit basically empty during the week that may have connectivity, that it might be an opportunity for some of the, the kids to get together in, in some of the rooms to be able to have someone kind of following what they're doing. Is that something that would be totally off the table or is that something you might want to pursue?
You know, if kids don't have connectivity. Right, I think school systems are looking at a lot of different options. Obviously, when they can, the best option is to bring the students back into the schools in a hybrid situation, which is what, you know, I really think we need to be looking at as we look at our, our numbers are continuing to come down in the state, our positivity rates and also the cases per one hundred thousand. So we're hopeful that these kinds of metrics going forward will allow more of our students to be able to come back, back into our schools at some point in the very near future.
Right, I was just looking at maybe a possible, you know, very inexpensive way to make sure these students are indeed being reached, so just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Salmon, I'd like you to encourage the department to think about a, a guideline that would allow for different models. So younger children having to look at a computer screen for three and a half times may not be as effective as an older child that can engage with that computer screen and synchronous learning. And in some of the virtual models that are intended to be virtual for a constant period as opposed to this, which is kind of an emergency response, they're generally using two hours of synchronous instruction time and then there, there are office hours and there will be individual student time, but I don't know that that individual student time would be an hour and a half every day per student. That would be a physical impossibility. You might want to establish different layers for different age groups and also allow there to be different program types that need to meet certain requirements to have a different synchronous learning guidance.
Certainly, you know, we will be looking at this more closely, but I will tell you that those time periods include all of the things you just talked about, office meetings, it's not just sitting in front of the computer. So we have to be very careful that our students are getting an equitable education, so we'll definitely look at that.
Well, members, at this time, unless there are additional questions, what I would like to do would be to entertain a motion from, based on the superintendent's recommendation, and that is that we establish a minimum three and a half hours of synchronous learning per day standard for the state of Maryland. And then after we've had this vote, then we've moved to the second part, which is around the accountability, want to allow enough time for that discussion. This is the beginning of a, of a longer in-depth look at This is the beginning of a longer, in-depth look at how we can help make sure that our children are able to learn. Yes, Ms. McCusker?
I think if we do move forward with some type of concrete recommendation, I think we need to be clear about what's going to be included in that timeframe, so that school systems are clear about what constitutes synchronous learning time that moves towards that three and a half or three, whatever it is we develop, whatever number it is we put out there, that school systems know what kinds of activities count towards that number, so that they are clear in what their schedules need to look like, and teachers are clear in what they need to be delivering to students. And also, I think we need to give some consideration to FERPA and privacy, as we are, many counties are requiring that, and many, but some counties are requiring that teachers are recording their synchronous instruction, and there are concerns about students appearing in that, and the give and take between the teacher and the student, being able to call on them is not possible when lessons are being recorded. So I think there needs to be some specificity in what that is counted towards and what teachers can and can't do in relationship to privacy and recording.
I think it was Dr. Green next, and then Ms. Halli.
Yes, I had a question in regards to tutoring. Unless I missed it, I only saw one district that included after-hours tutoring for their students, and I know, Dr. Sammon, we've got a chunk of money for that purpose. Are districts expected to include a tutoring component in their plans?
I'm going to have to give that question to Dr. Williams.
There was a, I'm going to echo again, I'm waiting. So there is a grant for tutoring, there was $100 million that was available for tutoring programs, each school system wrote something for that, and I've been looking over what they wrote, some of them wrote it to occur during the summer, some into the school year. And I've also heard something we haven't talked about, which we need to collect more information on, but I know a number of school districts that are planning to use their instructional assistants to help deliver some of those small group pieces that they might initiate, the teacher might initiate, just like we would do in the classroom. So I think that's going to also occur, and some of them have reflected that in their plans. I haven't seen all of the plans yet, I haven't read the plans thoroughly enough to know that's in everybody's plan, but I do know that that is being addressed, and I think it is very critical because we're going to have to have small group.
Very critical, and in fact, that should enter in and could be considered part of their synchronous hours as well? Would that fall under that category?
Absolutely.
So hopefully that their plans next time will specifically say, we're going to have this amount of tutoring, this amount of small group instruction, that'd be great. Thank you.
Halli, and then Ms. Marle, sorry.
I think this is a very significant piece of guidance, and I'd like to recommend that we defer it until the superintendent and staff are able to get some more input from the rest of the superintendents around the state, given that all these plans have been submitted and many of them don't meet the guidance. And as has been pointed out, we need to define what is included in that three and a half hour number, and that it might vary by age group or by program type. I'm hesitant to put it into guidance without there being more input from others.
Thank you. Ms. Marle?
Sorry, I was having audio issues, so I finally got on the video. I think my main concern with the three and a half hours is, and excuse me if I missed this in my transitions, does it have to be every day, or are we looking for a total 17 and a half hours per week? Because I know many of the districts have set so they have four days synchronous and one day that kind of varies. I mean, some are starting school next week, so I think I'm concerned about putting into our guidance a plan that will drastically change their schedules that they're already planning for very soon.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments to come back?
President Crawford, what we will do is I will do a little more research today, and we'll come back with a little more specificity tomorrow before we ask you to complete the vote.
Okay. So we will table the vote until, perhaps till tomorrow, till we have more data, and then from it, we'll decide whether we have enough data tomorrow to make a vote, or maybe we have to defer for additional information, secure additional information.
Correct. But I do want it noted that I would appreciate if everyone has a chance, we sent out paper copies of the data that I think are pretty clear and pretty specific about where the hours are being offered throughout the grade bands, and I'd like the board to hopefully take another look at that before the meeting tomorrow. Thank you.
Can, Dr. Sammon, can I also say, I think, could we also look at the ages? So synchronous learning for pre-K and K is kind of hard, so I wonder if we also consider synchronous versus asynchronous in the age band. It's much easier for the older children than it is for the younger children, so maybe we can also put that in our purview to look at.
Absolutely, we'll take care of that.
I think that's in it, isn't it?
Well, it is, it's all broken down into that, yes. She's just saying with recommendation, account for the age level as well. So I just, I, well, I'll save this for tomorrow then, I'll save my pontification for tomorrow's meeting, thank you.
Dr. Bocas?
Thank you. It's also slightly worrisome that some of the older students, the high school students, some of the districts only have two hours of synchronous learning, and there's a great deal of variation across districts, which worries me, because older students can handle more time, so it would be great to have more equity across the districts and more time for those high school students.
And I would like to point out, when I looked at these hours, I'm not sure that counties knew to include the small group time that they have built, the synchronous small group time and office hours time that they have built into schedules into these numbers. I know when I looked at the numbers for the district in which I teach, and I looked at the schedule that I have received for synchronous learning, the amount of time built in for small group learning, synchronous small group learning is not reflected in this at all. So I'm not even sure that these numbers are the same, are apples to apples. I'm not sure that every district has included that small group time, because it's certainly not reflected in my district's numbers. So that may also be something we need to consider, whether not everyone is reporting at the same rate.
It would be very important just to know that these plans have to be specific and have to be transparent. So if we're not able to look at the plan that's posted on the website and find the correct hours, then that's a problem in itself. These plans are to be transparent because it's parents and everybody that are looking at them, and so I would be very surprised if districts were not transparent with the hours and what they were doing with those hours. So we'll take a look again, but the plans need to be very transparent so that everybody knows what the expectations are.
Excellent.
And we'll end with that, and we'll go into the next presentation.
I'm just going to have Dr. Lee in the middle be the last one in to move into the next presentation. Dr. Lee?
Thanks, Clarence. My question is about the online tutoring and things, and I understand the motivation to count that towards the synchronous learning, but then that becomes a very personalized, individualized count, and so I'm wondering, I just want to make sure that when we talk about these three hours or whatever the expectation is, that it's easy for the school districts to count the time, because otherwise, we're going to have to keep track of every individual kid's learning time instead of for that grade. You know what I mean?
Yep, absolutely. So what we'll do is-
Excellent point.
-superintendent come back with a recommendation, you look at what you have and see whether you have enough information and be able to make a recommendation tomorrow. If you can't, then we'll have to look at it down the road. I think this is a matter that needs to be resolved as quickly as possible. So tomorrow will be a checkpoint, if you have it, great, if not, then we may have to defer the decision. But I think the consensus of the board is that more is better, and we need to be able to take into account the different learning at the different age levels, and also children that are vulnerable figuring out how to address this, in a way that, again, creates an environment in which our children will have an opportunity to learn over the course of this year. So with that, superintendent, if you wish to move to the second.
Yes, thank you, President Crawford. I appreciate that summary, and we're now going to move to the implementation. Can you hear me now?
Yes. I'm just trying to give time for my-
We're now going to move to the-
Echoing voice.
We're now going to move to the presentation on local school systems recovery plans, the implementation and evaluation piece, which I think is very critical. So Mary, will you start to share, and then Dr. Williamson can begin?
Implementation and evaluation.
Uh, Dr. Williamson?
It would be very important, we have an opportunity to see how they're being implemented, monitor them, and to really talk about what kinds of outcomes they should have. And we have wrestled with a variety of ways to do this. We only have so many staff, as you know, not that that's an excuse, but be able to give sufficient support, you have to know exactly what you need to do to be able to get these two pieces done. We had done one piece of them very successfully. So we have a couple of dates here I've already shared with you, I think you remember this, that we had a recovery plan that we posted in June, May, and then again in June, and it laid out our guidance, and in that guidance it had 13 recommendations that school systems are requirements that school systems would have to address, and that we had said about them being posted on the website by the 14th, and indeed, many of them, all of those, posted them as early as possible to get feedback from their communities, and then put their final ones up at least by the 14th. We knew we'd used a review process before with a rubric that was very successful for us with continuity of learning, and we thought that we would use that same process, and the team, because the team had already been involved in reviewing plans from the continuity of learning, so they were familiar with the school system, if we wanted to get this done in an efficient way, be able to utilize that information and get it back to the school systems. That's what the school systems like most about the continuity of learning review, they got feedback that helped them know how they could improve, and they all did step up and address anything that hadn't been at the level it needed to be. So we invited to be with us today is Tiara Booker-Dwyer, and she is the person that has the team of individuals that's going to be reading and reviewing and actually doing that piece with our recovery plans. And then we have Dara Shaw with us, who will come in at a certain point, she will talk about the evaluation component and how we're going to be looking at that. So I'm going to begin by turning it over to Ms. Dwyer, and she is going to share a little bit at a high level about what we're doing with the review. Tiara?
A warning, Mr. Crawford, Natalia, and members of the State Board of Education. All 24 school systems submitted plans to address the reopening of their school systems based on these 13 requirements that were in the Maryland Together Maryland Recovery Plan for Education. A rubric was developed collaboratively with my team and other divisions at the Maryland State Department of Education, and teams of training reviewers from within the state agency rated each plan based off of the required components. Reviewers, they provide district's feedback justifying a rating as comprehensive, which means that the evidence exceeded component requirement acceptable, which means that the evidence in the plan met component requirements, or developing, which means that the evidence did not meet component requirements, that the component was vague or incomplete, or unable to be rated, which meant that the component was not included in the plan that was submitted. Any plan that had components rated as developing or unable to be rated will need to be revised and re-submitted to the Maryland State Department of Education for a second review. All reviewers participated in a training to identify evidence and to calibrate evaluation ratings. Reviewers formed a consensus around the rating for each plan, for each component in each plan, and there's a team, it's approximately six reviewers, so it's the Office of Leadership Development and School Improvement, the Division of Curriculum, Restructural Improvement and Professional Learning, Division of Early Interventions and Special Education Services, Office of People, Transportation, and Emergency Services, Division of Assessment, Accountability and Information Technology, and our Office of Athletics. They're all forming, we have all formed a team to review these plans. The second review, as I mentioned earlier, would only be conducted if the items were rated developing or unable to be rated. A school system must submit the revisions back to NSDE within two weeks of receiving their initial rating. The Maryland State Department of Education, we are available to provide support to school systems to address the specific feedback that we will give, we are available to provide technical assistance to support the school system in moving from a developing or unable to be rated assessment to acceptable or comprehensive. And yes, these are the areas that I have gone over, and this is just a sample of what is within the rubric. So for every requirement, we have identified the different components, and then the first evaluation that they will receive is whether or not that component is present in the plan or not, so that's just a simple yes or no, is this component there or it's not. Then in the rubric, it'll identify the areas of promise, and so what we do is we fill directly from the plan the justification that supports the rating as developing, acceptable, comprehensive, or unable to be rated. We put in the link or the page number, so this way the school system will know what we reviewed, and that way, if they have any feedback for us, if they, well, maybe you missed it, or it's on a different page, they will be able to, we will be able to engage in that type of dialogue. At the bottom of this table, there's another section that also says opportunities for votes, and this is the section where we will put in any specific feedback that's needed for any component that's rated developing or unable to be rated. And at this time, I will turn it back over to Dr. Williamson.
So one of the problems is, I need to go back because I, I'm echoing, I intended, I should have said to have Mary go over a timeline, but Tiara also didn't have an opportunity to rehearse with us. So I know that we went through that fairly quickly without it being totally in sync with what Tiara was talking about, but her process is very well-defined, and I know that she'll stay with us so she can answer any questions if you have any questions about this after we do the evaluation component. Before we do that evaluation component, I wanted to ask Mary to go back and pick up the timeline, just so we could show you the timeline, and we're not going to go back and go through the requirements and make you aware of them, but you might just flash them up on the screen to make sure you see what each of the 13 were. Mary, I'm turning it back to you.
Thank you. I'm just going to go back. These, as Dr. Williamson mentioned, and you've seen these, we've talked about them before, these are the short version of the 13 requirements that each plan had to include, and we have those listed for you. That is what the team will be reviewing. We wanted to give you a little bit of a timeline, so right now, already, the training was last week, the teams are presently reviewing the plans as we speak. At the September board meeting, we will be sharing the results of that review. The- The second thing, there's a couple of things going on. And Dara and Dr. Shaw in just a minute is going to share part two. Part one is happening. We're going to share that. We'll go into part two. But starting in August, this month and next month, the training for part two will also begin. In the October board meeting, in addition, I want to go back to what Dr. Salmon said initially, is that the October board meeting, we do want to go back and give you the status of our 24 school systems, students that are in school, whether they be small group, hybrid, at-risk groups, special education groups, EL groups, and identification of what students are bringing, what school systems are bringing in. In November, we want to provide first marking period data to MSDE that from the local school systems. And Dara is going to share this. In December and January, we expect to present the first marking period data results. This has to do with part two. Also, in January, in February, you get normally fall enrollment data that is posted. This is data and staffing data that also goes on the report card. And in February, you get graduation data for 2020, 2019, 2020, and attendance data that'll go to the state board. In the summer, we want to take a look at an entire evaluation report. And so much of this work will lead to that evaluation. The important thing is so that at the end of the year, we can say, this is what happened and this is the kind of progress it's made. So that's just a little bit of your timeline. We will be adding additional data as the year goes on. And now I'm going to go to Dr. Shaw's slide and then.
I'll call Dr. Shaw to nod when she can do the proof.
Yeah. Dr. Shaw, if you just let me know when you're ready, I will forward the slide. Be myself now. And Dara, you're on.
Good morning to everyone, State Board, Dr. Salmon. So I wanted to walk you through what we're calling part two of this recovery plan. As Tiara Booker-Dwyer explained, part one is really a setup, is looking at the content of the plans to make sure that the plans have those 13 essential components and the degree to which they're meeting MSDE standards on each of those 13. So part one is to look at the plan. Part two, so we'll call that the before the first day of schoolwork. Part two is after the first day of schoolwork. So what we want to be able to do is to make periodic reports about what happened during the school year. And there's two types of questions that we can ask about what happened over the school year. The first is really important, what I'll call implementation measures. These are questions, basic questions about what happened once the first day of school happened, once the first day of school occurred. During pre-COVID times, we didn't have to do implementation measures about what school looked like, because on the first day of school, we assume that the school building is open for however many hours it's open. And we assume that each student, if they show up to school, they're going to receive face-to-face instruction, secretus instruction. That's how school works. So we don't usually do implementation measures over in a traditional school year. However, as we know, school doesn't look like it used to right now. So part two of our recovery, recovery plan, the state's role in this recovery plan, is to study the implementation measures and outcomes of the recovery. So what we're going to do is we are going to provide school systems with training at the start of the school year and ongoing technical support as needed throughout the term to collect a number of discrete, easily defined data points so that we can, they can report to us and we can report to you at the end of the first marking period and then periodically throughout the school year. As you remember, when we brought you data on things like quote unquote attendance during the continuity of learning time in the spring, I came before you and I said, we don't have great data on this because when we closed the schools or when we shifted to remote learning because of COVID, we did not have, plans were not in place at that point. And so we were having to study plans retroactively. We didn't have great data. Now, though, we are able to tell systems now what data we expect them to be collecting over the first marking period and over the course of the year so that we can easily report that out to the public and make sure that school systems are being held accountable for doing what it is that they say that they're going to do in the plan. Part one is making sure that their plan is in place and meets all of our criteria. Part two is checking to make sure, okay, you had these elements in your plan. Did you actually do that? So if you, Mary, if you could go to slide 12 of the next slide, please. In your packet, you have the full list of questions here. We just pulled a few samples to show you during this slideshow. But there are three types of questions that we're going to be asking school systems. The first is what I call data-based questions. These are questions that we can answer, that school systems need to be able to answer with a number, a percent, a number of days, things like that. So we're going to ask about the provision of online learning and in-person instruction, ask things like what percent of students, for what percent of students have attempted contact and unsuccessful. One of the requirements of the continuity of learning, of the recovery plans is that students are given some sort of start-of-year diagnostic to determine student current learning. Part one, again, will make sure that the systems are planning to do that. But in part two, we ask them at the close of the first marking period, what percent of students were actually given that start-of-year diagnostic? In other words, you had planned to give them a start-of-year diagnostic. Did that actually occur and to what degree? Some of the other sample questions in this data portion are going to ask about average daily attendance. Again, you've seen that we have required school systems to provide, to have these attendance policies define what counts as attendance. And they will be taking attendance based on their attendance policies. So at the end of the first marking period, we're going to ask them to tell us, what has been your average daily attendance? Again, so that we can report that to you. So part one of these implementation questions are what I'll call, again, database questions we can answer with a number. The next, if you could go to the next slide. Here's some more, oh, sorry, here's some more database questions. So what percent of teachers have received training on effective distance learning practices, things like that? So again, you said that you were going to do these things in the plan. By the end of the first marking period, have you actually done? If you could go to the next slide, please. The second set of questions that we're going to be asking them have more to do with compliance monitoring. Rather than answering as a number, these are yes or no questions. So again, in the recovery plans, school systems are required to provide their safety protocols for maintaining healthy environments. They are required to provide their safety protocols with respect to shared objects. They are required to provide their safety protocols with respect to frequently touched surfaces. We're going to be asking them to tell us whether these protocols have been followed or not. So these are more compliance, compliance-based questions. Finally, the, we're going to also give them, ask them as part of this monitoring process, there are a few narrative-based questions that are really impossible to capture with a simple yes or no compliance question or with a data question. And as you can see in the handout and the supplemental materials, these questions really are related to instruction and to describe for us how the school system is maintaining, how the school system is ensuring, rather, that Maryland college and career-ready standards are being taught in all of their classrooms. And there's a couple narrative questions that relate to equity and also making sure how the school system is ensuring that the individuals with disabilities in the Education Act and the ADA and these other equity issues are being met as well. And these questions are much more than just a compliance yes or no, but school systems will be required to describe that to us. At the end of the first marking period, the school systems will report this to MSDE, at which point we will consolidate the information and report it to you, the board, and to the public to make sure that, again, that the school systems are implementing what it is that they said that they were going to do in their recovery plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Dara. I just also want to ask the board to refer to the larger document, which is about 26 pages. It's titled, it was also, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Maryland Together Local School Systems Recovery Plans Implementation and Evaluation, COVID-19 Response and Path Forward. This also came with your materials. This is something, yes, thank you, President Crawford, for holding that up. This is, this details exactly what was just highlighted in today's second presentation, but there's much, much more detail in this document for you to peruse. And so with that, I'll stop to see what questions you might have.
If we can take down the PowerPoint, we'll take, we'll have opportunity to ask some questions again. This is the beginning of a conversation, a deeper dive into what's going on. Dr. Wilcox.
Thank you for that presentation. Is there any way to gauge the quality of the teaching material, at least for the older students? Is there any way to conduct some surveys or have ratings where the material delivered is of high quality to try to gauge the content? I think that's one of the most important things is because if the material's not engaging and is, it's hard to do online education. And I think we should be looking at that, you know, the students' level and the engagement in the sessions, the quality of the delivery of the material. And maybe that's beyond the scope of what you're doing, but I think it's really important.
Dara, can you address that concern?
Sure. So we focused on the implementation measures that school systems will be able to report to us at the end of the first marking period. And that your concern and your questions are certainly excellent. Traditionally, and again, not that the before times and the after times are the same, but pre-COVID, things like looking at quality of instruction and, you know, making sure even at the basic level, something like, are the standards even being taught in the classes? Right? Let alone, is it interesting? Is there good teaching? Things like that. Those are the purview and the responsibility of the principals, the teachers and the principals in that they do their observations, in that they do their teacher evaluation, in that they are the instructional leaders of the school. And so what we are able to do at the state level, at least right now, is we have built in as part of this narrative that school systems are responsible for ensuring that these kinds of, I don't want to say oversight, but, but, for lack of a better word, that school system is responsible for ensuring that these things happen in whatever ways that they work best for the delivery model of their instruction. And then at the very least, you know, MSDE is, they are required to report to us that they are doing, doing these things to ensure some kind of, that the standards are being taught, for example, rather than us going in and gathering lesson plans or observe the classrooms or things like that.
Can we ask for some of those data from the principals in the specific districts? Can we collate that information just to gauge how things have been going with, under the virtual learning context?
That's something that we would have to consider. I can't answer that question. And in fact, Tiara Booker-Dwyer, who I know is still in here somewhere, although I don't see her video on, the, the teacher and principal evaluation system is actually run through that office, through the Office of School Improvement. And so again, it's something that we would have to consider very carefully in, you know, what is, what is our role, role, excuse me, in ensuring that these things are hap, that the school systems are doing what they are supposed to do versus, you know, what, what is traditionally our role? So it's something that we'd have to talk with across the board with MSDE.
I think that's a great question. And Dr. Shaw is correct. Tiara Booker-Dwyer's department is the oversight for teacher and principal evaluation. So we'll have a discussion with her and we'll bring that back up as we discuss all the other things about evaluation. So thank you for that.
Miss Allen.
I'd like to recommend that you add a question. I'm following up on Dr. Wilcox's suggestion that you add a question about the district's approach to instructional design for remade learning.
Did you get that? All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
That's great.
Just a question about the data that we'll be getting. And I'm so pleased that we'll be getting this on a quarterly basis instead of at the end of the year. Will the data, especially the attendance data, be disaggregated and how will it be disaggregated, Dr. Shaw?
It's a great question. So MSDE is able to provide, when we do our once-a-year attendance review, MSDE is able to provide very, very detailed disaggregations by race, by gender, by students with special services, by grade level. MSDE is able to provide these very detailed disaggregation because the way that attendance data collection works is that the school systems dump a whole bunch of raw data into MSDE's system and then we do the number crunching. There is a whole lot of complicated calculations that go into all of that number crunching. We do this once a year. They give us their attendance data. It's actually twice a year, but we, they give us the raw data and we do the crunching. Because we, we're going to have to see, because we're working on a shorter reporting schedule, because as you said, we want to give you data with greater frequency than we normally do. Sometimes for some of this data, we, the school system is not giving us all of the raw data and we're doing the calculations for them. Rather, the school systems are doing those calculations on their own and then giving us the answer. And so it's a question, your point is taken and I understand why you're asking. I'm going to need to go back to our Office of Accountability to figure out what is a reasonable medium between these two things, between waiting long periods of time between reporting periods and getting very, very detailed information and having a very, having a much shorter turnaround than we're used to, but seeing what kind of detailed information we can get at the same time. There's going to be a trade-off there, but I need to go back to, to our Accountability Office here and to our local school systems to see what they are capable of doing, of providing without MSDE, without them dumping these massive amounts of data in MSDE, which again, they don't do very frequently, and then MSDE doing the number crunching for them. So we need to figure out what that trade-off is.
Because, and I understand what you're saying, it seems to me that the local school districts should be able to disaggregate their data themselves on a quarterly basis. And then you, at the end of the year, can, you know, you'll catch the errors that they may have made. But I think it was so important, I've been reading, you know, articles talking about how distance learning is, you know, the equity issues in regards to distance learning, especially in regards to minorities and especially in regard to boys as well. So I think it's key that we keep track of that. And if we're seeing, in fact, I think one number I saw was anywhere from 20 to 25% of the absences, I'm sorry, of boys were absent during the spring attendance, 20 to 25%. of the absences, uh, uh, I'm sorry, of boys were absent during the spring attendance, 20 to 25%. So it is important that not only is MSD, MSDE keeping track of that, but the, 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 um, locals need to be keeping track as well. If they've got, you know, half of their minorities or half of their boys or half of their girls or, or half of their disability, if they're not keeping track of that and they're not even collecting that data until the end of the year, you know, and not only should they be collecting it, but I think we should be monitoring that as well as a kind of accountability system to make sure that these groups are not being left behind.
I, I really understand, I just. I think it's the, the only, I, I totally agree with what you're saying. That's, that's the equity piece to these plans. If we can't disaggregate and know what students are benefiting from education, then we aren't doing our job. So we will find a way to make this happen, whether it's done at the local level and we just synthesize it for you all, for your edification, or whether we do any data dumps, I think it's important that we could at least do some descriptive data, um, and, uh, report to you, um, and, and make that a requirement for local school systems to do. I just think that's so very important. So thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just didn't, I, I just wanted to be careful about, because I know that our local school systems are listening to you without overpromising. Um, you know, for example, if, if my teacher were taking attendance today, my teacher would of course very carefully mark that Darashaw was present. But my teacher does not mark Darashaw female, white female, present. My characteristics are associated with my name later. Um, and so we need, we just need to, to check into at what point Darashaw white female is attached to my name being present, um, to make sure that, you know, our, what, what we were, that we're capable of doing these kinds of disaggregations on this much shorter time scale. But we will, we will be working on that, Dr. Shaw. That will be, uh, certainly an emphasis. So thank you.
Very good. Ms. Moore.
Thank you. Um, as, as you're looking at this evaluation information and as this is going to go on the Maryland report card, are we also looking at, um, the accountability measures that we usually use for the star rating and how those interact? Because I know one of the things, um, like with attendance, one of the things that worries me with regard to chronic absenteeism is how specifically kids who can't connect that day, that will impact chronic absenteeism, whether they are marked absent, you know, an excused absence or whether they have some other way to account themselves as present. I think it was Cleenan's, um, was one of the ones talked about, they could call the school and have alternate ways to be marked present. I guess how are we, are we making sure that some of those measures are standardized in ways that are not going to negatively impact those ratings later? If that makes sense?
Yeah, it's, it's a great question.
I do, I do think, um, that we really have to be careful about how we are, um, discussing accountability as we move forward. And that's a whole nother conversation beyond today's conversation. I think it is something the board is going to have to reevaluate our system of accountability. Uh, you know, for example, we're hopeful that we can, we can have our state assessments this spring, um, and that will give us that particular piece of our accountability system. But, uh, there are many other factors that we need to evaluate right now based on the situation. Um, and so I believe your question is a great one, but I think we're going to have to come back to it when we look at the whole accountability system as we move forward.
I understand, thank you.
If you gather the data, um, as you would expect, something as complex as this, there'll be issues. So we want to be able to dive down and, uh, again, make sure that we're creating an environment where children can learn. And from the board, as we dive in, we may, we're going to talk tomorrow about, uh, different outreach strategies, things that we may want to do to get additional data. But from the board's perspective, to try to identify areas where we can be helpful, where we can be advocates, where we can be advocates for children, for the Maryland, uh, education system. And also ask the right questions. Sometimes the right questions are a little uncomfortable. But to be able to do that from the perspective of how do we make things better for kids? Um, that's what we would like to do. So again, I want to thank you, thank your team. Uh, you guys have done a great job as usual and we appreciate that. And you've helped identify some gaps in some areas. So we look forward to tomorrow, uh, potentially hearing from you, Dr. Salmon, about, um, the hours, the daily hours of instruction. Uh, if you have, uh, some insights that you can share, we can look at that tomorrow, maybe ready for vote. Um, what I'd like to do at this point is to, um, if there are no other comments related to the recovery, I'd like to entertain a, um, motion for, uh, journey to, uh, executive session.
Uh, so who's Gail Bates?
So I think I have, uh, I have Dr. Harvey, I think was, um, for him, so he's for motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Gail Bates.
Okay. So Senator Bates. Right? Okay. Saying no questions, all in favor? Say aye.
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 Aye. Close? Same. Mr. Shaw, do we have?
Yes, it was unanimous by voice vote, there were no no's and no extensions.
Pursuant to section B dash, feel fine, be of the general provisions article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, the state board will adjourn to executive session to discuss the following: pre-infernal board management items. The meeting will be adjourned from executive session. And thank the public for taking part in this, um, in our meeting today. And, um, we'll be back online tomorrow morning at 9:30. So we'll now adjourn and move to executive session. Thank you very much, everyone.